Order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for August 23rd. Having them pledge, we do have a full quorum this morning. Call of review. It's from the pleasure.
Move to accept. Second.
Good, Mr. Johnson.
Leave is set, Mr. Chairman, for your approval.
This morning, we'll move right in. Boyden, you ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
First item I have today, better is our renewal of a contract with, um, for, uh, for our effluent wastewater disinfection. We, our primary means of doing that is for, is through UV disinfection, and we have a service contract for those items every year. And, and in the past, Timsco has done that work. They're the sales rep for Trojan Technology, but this year Trojan Technology has taken over those items. We will be doing the service contract. They come out four times a year and check out our units, make sure they're working properly. We're disinfecting the water correctly before we discharge it into Savannah River. And we recommend an annual contract of $11,476.
Like, is this a requirement to have a third-party check?
We could do the contract, but a specialized piece of equipment, and we just don't have the tools and the staff to do that work.
Yeah, I think what I was asking is this like a state requirement that we haven't used a third-party? I guess the answer is no.
No, no, sir, it's not. It just has to be maintained, and we have to test our effluent to make sure we're meeting state requirements.
Second.
So move.
The second item I have for your consideration today is the replacement of a, uh, of a, um, I guess it's a Ramvac HX6. It's an older vehicle we have that is causing us quite a bit of issues in maintenance. We actually have two of them, and we have in the budget to replace both of them this year. But, uh, you know, when we, when we got the quote back when we were doing budget, inflation has kicked in, and, and we are almost $75,000 over budget with the one. So we're not gonna elect to only replace one this year. But, um, it is to replace this unit. Uh, the new unit is, is a better unit. We have a lot of issues with this one where this allows us to go in and excavate around existing utilities without damaging those utilities. Uh, we don't have to call in for the locates. Um, when we have emergency conditions, we can get in and work around other utilities where you can't dig in the traditional methods. The staff is recommending replacement of this vehicle. We're gonna surplus the old vehicle, um, for a expense of $498,500.
I'd say, uh, quote price is for two units. Price still good.
Mark, can you speak to that, the quote price being good for two units? I believe we just asked for one quote correctly. Correct?
They are aware that we could potentially just go with one due to the inflationary costs.
The price is still good if we only get one.
Verbally, I was told so, yes, sir. All right.
How old is the one we're replacing?
2017.
Pretty quick, isn't it?
It is. Um, it was our first shot at, at, at getting these units. The Ramvacs were the first ones we purchased. And we haven't, we just haven't been happy with them. They have been, you know, a lot of times, we have two of them, and a lot of times, both of them have been in the shop for maintenance. We have a lot of pinch points on it where the hoses fail. Um, the tanks are very small, which means we have to go empty them a lot, and it really slows down our work.
So is this the same brand?
No, sir. We're going with a different manufacturer.
Move to consent. Second.
Move.
The third item we have for your consideration today is, this is simply, uh, we're changing the date. Um, we're doing an amendment to a contract that was, uh, approved on May 3rd, and we want to change the date to match when we actually started the contract and when the billing needs to start of July 1st. And staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Move to consent. What is it? I apologize.
Uh, this is for the billing software, the new billing software we're working on.
That's a billing software?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is one y'all approved back on, uh, on May 3rd, but it's, we're just now really getting started, so we want to move the start date so it coincides with when we're paying the bills for the software.
Pay it before we... The, the full capacity of, this is a lot of online stuff and...
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir. It's, we're utilizing the cloud, um, so we're able to use apps, uh, for, for our customers. You know, there'll be an app for them to use. But this software was supposed to be an 18-month implementation period. When we met 1st of July and did the kickoff, they provided us, they said they'd be done in 12 months. So, um, we're looking to start sometime, you know, implement the software and go to, go live next July.
Ever haven't already. Second.
So move.
Yes, sir. The last item I have for you to consider today is a vehicle allowance transfer. We have, uh, we have, the positions are empty, so this is a good time to, uh, to make this transfer. But we have a manager two position that currently gets a vehicle allowance, um, which is our inspections manager. And we have an asset manager, which, um, he has a county vehicle. And our inspections manager is expected to be on job sites quite a bit, be out in the field. So it looks more professional with him showing up in a county vehicle. So we basically want to swap these two positions. So we want to move the vehicle allowance to the asset manager and move the vehicle to the inspections manager. Staff recommends approval of the swap. Yes, sir. We've, we've interviewed and, and we have people plan for these positions.
Move to consent. Second.
So move.
Thank you.
Hi, this is...
Morning.
Sir.
Uh, first item we have for you is a Tanco Lighting contract revisions. Uh, the board approved earlier this month a contract with Tanco Lighting for the streetlight procedure update. We engaged them shortly prior with an expedited delivery schedule on this. Um, they were, the president was actually in Greece at the time. Working kind of remotely. But they were going from the original contract they had seen when we issued the RFP a year ago. There were some slight revisions, uh, from that contract to the one that the board approved. The county attorney has reviewed these. Um, nothing significant, we feel. Um, staff recommends approval of revisions.
No change in price?
No change in price, and they have been working at risk to this point.
On track to get a price?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
And this, and this says proposed pricing is more expensive.
That was, uh, what the board approved. That's still the original. But what is marked out was the original proposal last year. New, um, figures are what the board approved last, uh, month. That was, it was marked out that way because he was in Greece when he did it.
Had to pay for that Greece vacation?
That's right.
Move to consent. Second.
So move.
Next item we have is the purchase of a Bobcat compact track loader and auxiliary attachments, uh, from Bobcat Augusta. So Stormwater Operations currently runs six crews, or which share two Bobcat loaders. There's a lot of scheduling and planning that, that goes on to, to make sure they, they have the resources, they need to do their, their task at hand that day. Um, this will certainly, uh, we currently have two Bobcat loaders. Um, this will make it three among four crews, so there still will be some scheduling, but it will certainly make that, uh, make their operations much more efficient. In fact, if they'll be able to do more. Um, this was, um, approved in the budget. It would be funded by the Stormwater Utility Fund. Staff recommends approval for the purchase of the Bobcat attachments in the amount of $143,083.42.
This is a new unit.
Yes.
How many do we own in Stormwater, did you say?
Two. Or four crews.
Do you know how many we own in the county?
Couldn't use them from another department, is that...
Correct.
Can, but you have to, there's some accounting that goes along with it if you, if you cross funds.
This looks like it's configured for some of our retention funds?
That's correct. So the auxiliary attachments will include a bucket, a, uh, a mowing, uh, attachment, and a brush cutting attachment. Uh, this one's actually a little lighter than the ones we have, uh, so we'll pull one off a pond maintenance crews and replace it with this one, um, as it works, it slopes a little, without tearing them up as bad.
And it proves our productivity.
Productivity and efficiency, absolutely. Guys running as hard as they can, and they're in these ponds every day, and, and anytime we can get a, um, replace two or three guys in these engine ponds running a weed eater at 110 degrees, then on a whole with a, with a much safer piece of equipment.
That we're replacing two guys with this?
Well, this pools, this, this is more efficient. They're able to, we're able to get folks out of the pond and, and...
That actually wasn't my question. I heard you say we're replacing...
We're not replacing. We're, we're sending, we're taking those guys out of the pond and putting them, doing the ancillary work around the top. We're getting more done.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Move to consent.
So move.
The next item we have is a construction contract with Blair Construction for the Wood Creek Lane Stormwater Emer- Emergency Repair Project. So staff received several calls from this neighborhood, uh, a property owner in this neighborhood about sinkholes forming alongside the road. We were, we went out and investigated. Uh, after Ridge and Bridges had already repaired these sinkholes several times, we realized that the pipe system was failing. Uh, if it does fail, uh, and there is a catastrophic failure of the roadway, then six property owners will be cut off, uh, from their homes. Because of that, we classified this as an emergency repair project. We engaged the engineer immediately, uh, started work. Of course, coordinating this with county management, uh, they started work immediately. Um, and it's about six weeks ago. We have a design ready. Uh, we've, we bid it out, um, and Blair Construction was the low bid in the amount of $290,706. I should note that because of the supply chain issues, staff recognized that we didn't want to design this, bid it, issue the contract, the notice of proceeding, then have the pipe ordered, and then have to wait on pack, pipe to get in. So we ordered the pipe as soon as the design for the pipe was ready. We ordered, ordered the material ahead of time. A total of about $35,000 in pipe and, and structures. Um, and, and we've already received some. We're still waiting, uh, probably another month before it comes in. Uh, so we're hoping we'll have all the material by, by the time we sign the contract with Blair, if, if also approve this. This will be funded out of the 1722 lost stormwater fund. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. A second, and I, I believe this process started back in April, and I appreciate you taking, paying attention to it.
It's been going on for a little while now, yes, sir.
Yes. Then six people didn't sound like very many until they can't get out of there, so.
Six homes and their families, that's right.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Second.
So move.
Uh, the next item we have is a construction contract with Reeves Construction Company, uh, for the White Oak Business Park Road Extension Phase Two. Staff is questioning, uh, board approved, contracting an amount of $5,755,884.75. This would, this is a project for the Development Authority. Uh, it would be funded ultimately by the Development Authority. If Bennett's here, if you have any questions for him, uh, staff is recommending approval.
I had a couple of questions earlier. Do you want to address those? You want to bring Robbie out?
Robbie should answer your questions. That's all right.
Morning, Mr. Bennett. How are you?
Morning, Ray.
Morning.
Um, just kind of bring us up to speed on how much, uh, how, the length of the road, how much property is opening up, and how many potential lots maybe, or any of that?
Absolutely. So, um, this road system that we're putting in is two miles of road opening up four main sites with a smaller fifth site. One is for the larger 65 acres at the back of White Oak, which we do have a letter of intent on a project, um, that we are working with for in the coming months. Um, ultimately, it'll open up a 40-acre site, a 29-acre site, and a 20-acre site, um, in addition to that 65 acres. Right now, we have about 11 different projects looking at all of those sites, all those other parcels within Phase One. Timing on getting the roads in is the question, number two question, is rating of the sites and being able to deal with that. All funds are currently in our accounts, and we're proceeds from the original bond issued for Phase Two.
Uh, on those folks that have an interest. Sure will be aware of what they're doing and the amount of activity they'll be putting on the newly improved exit I-20. I'd certainly hate not, uh, to get finished with that and right back to where we're at before we started, so.
Absolutely. Each project has a different number. Um, obviously, we don't have enough land, nor would we ever land all 11 type projects, but they do range from higher-paying engineering-type jobs to technology-based, as well as general, um, higher-tech manufacturing. So it's a good mix. I think the largest employer on those sites, now there's 700 jobs, um, that being said, most of them around the 300 mark, or, um, even the larger project is...
Is there a way we can kind of negotiate or talk with those folks when they lay on shift changes? Because many folks that we're gonna have out there, you start changing shifts, everybody at seven o'clock.
Right.
School, work, traffic is just a nightmare. So, and, and I know you do what you do, but, uh...
Could be done, though, if you think about it. This says 300 week, 300 days, so you're talking about almost a year to get this done. And the exit's supposed to be done before the end of the year, right, man?
Last update they gave us is traffic on the new bridge mid-September. Uh, traffic in the roundabout new configuration December 2nd. But to, to Chair Richardson's point, if, even if it is done, and you dump out 12 new sites along with Club Car and Amazon at all at the exact same time, it's gonna overload it, so staggering those start times would be very beneficial.
And I think most of them would be willing to have those conversations, and I know Amazon and Club Car both have been, um, looking and trying to work as a group as to when they're releasing, so they're not all releasing at one time. That being said, Amazon releasing 1,200 at one time is still a lot of people, so.
Also, I think, I think the design of the ramps were before there was White Oak, it was ever thought about, also.
It was. They, um, they, they did say it'll handle the traffic as it is out there, but time will tell.
I will say, it's not part of this proposal, but we have had our engineers and talking with county staff on the possibility of doing a secondary entrance to White Oak, um, to give another point of exit. That is ways away and currently unfunded, but it is something that I know my board has pushed to the top of information, so.
Yeah. Second.
So move.
Thank you, Robbie.
The next item we have is an ordinance number 22-05, revision of Chapter Two, Administration Section 2-452, waiver of appraisal requirements for purchase or donation of below fair market value property. So basically, the, the, the way the ordinance is written now is if we have a, um, uh, property option worth what we believe to be $75,000 or less, uh, we have to bring that to you board to have the board approve a waiver of appraisal requirements, required to be appraised unless so approved, waived by the board. Working with the county attorney, we see that, uh, we can be much more efficient, staff can be much more efficient. If we can waive that on the front end, if staff can waive that at staff level and negotiate, uh, without the appraisal, and should an option be reached, we would still have to bring that, uh, option to the board for final approval and acceptance. Uh, so this is just to basically revise the ordinance to where we don't have to request the board waive the appraisal. We can do that at staff level. Already talked with county management and the county attorney. Uh, they're in agreement. Uh, staff recommends approval.
So on this, there should be a time-saving and a money-saving?
I would say a time-saving, absolutely.
Yeah, uh, from the money statement, if we don't have to go out and get an appraisal for a piece of property that we're planning on spending $500 to buy, and we just paid $2,000 on appraisal, doesn't make sense.
That's right.
Get with it? I'm good. Move to consent.
This would need to get to the debate agenda.
Yes, sir. Oh, move to debate. You're right, sorry. Second.
So move.
Uh, this next item, I'm gonna ask Mr. Slotter to say, 'cause he has the... On it.
So in River Island, there's a section that has some townhomes that was brought to this board for a, um, for a revision of the PUD a year or two ago. I forget the exact date.
I remember, yeah.
Basically, it was zero lot line, require allowance for those things, contingent upon a couple of things happening. And one of the things that had to happen was they had to abandon, we had to abandon a drainage utility easement on the property. Uh, on the rear of the property, I guess, I say rear, townhomes are kind of built backwards, so the, the part of the property facing the public park had a 20-foot drainage easement, 10-foot on the private property, 10-foot on the HOA property. Uh, requirement of the zoning that this board put on there was that they had to get that easement off the property in order to build up to the, to the lot line. So we have no infrastructure in it. There is a private storm line in that that is owned by the HOA, so it'll be between the private property and the HOA to determine how they deal with their private sewer, private storm system and the easement, but we're asking to abandon the existing drainage utility easement back to the, to the property owners.
Don't perceive this to be a problem in 10 years?
No, it's, again, as they put their own private system in, there's an existing system in, in place catching the, the water. Uh, there's a retaining wall in there. There's a couple of things in that easement, um, and again, when we looked at it the first time, staff saw the need to abandon that easement, and they just finally got around actually asking for us to do it.
Yeah. Second.
So move.
The next item we have is, uh, the acceptance of improvements for Jackson Heights Phase Two. Include the road, the storm, the water, and sanitary sewer along with the right-of-ways. And easements associated with these improvements, uh, the stormwater detention ponds were accepted in Phase One, so they're not included. Item, uh, this would be contingent upon staff's approval. Staff recommends acceptance of all improvements.
Move to consent. Second.
So move.
And the last item we have is a construction contract with Reeves Construction, uh, for the William Few Parkway Rehab Phase Two. As you know, we, we recently completed the Phase One of the resurfacing of William Few Parkway from Lewiston Road to Columbia Road. Uh, the reason we didn't do it all together was, uh, one, we wanted to make sure we had enough money, and two, um, we had several improvements, uh, turn lane improvements we wanted to make along the corridor between Columbia Road and Washington Road. Now that we've finished the first phase, we know exactly how much money we have left, uh, in the TIA project. Uh, we also have time to do the turn lane, uh, schedule, the turn lane improvements. Uh, so the goal now is, is if the board approves this contract, is to issue a notice of proceed to Reeves Construction, and at the same time, uh, have Ridge and Bridges go out and construct two, uh, improvements. One at Summerland, putting in a left turn lane widening at Summerland, and the other, uh, basically putting in a two-way left turn lane at, through the commercial section across from Windmill Plantation. Uh, so if the board approves, then we'll do that, and hopefully that, that construction by Ridge and Bridges will be completed before the overlay comes through. The amount of the bid for Reeves Construction was $2,23,575. The amount remaining, uh, in the general fund for, uh, for, for the TIA project that was approved, uh, doesn't quite reach that. Um, it's only 1.1 million. Uh, the remaining 1.4, uh, would be from the 1722 spa, so I'm just getting confused, but that would equate to 2.5 million. So even though the, the contract with Reeves is for $2,23,575, we're asking the board to allow a budget of 2.5 million, uh, to complete some additional work at Patriots Park and down to, uh, Columbia Road. Uh, in addition, uh, that's it.
I know we're stopping at Patriots Park on these, but...
That's right.
When will we, that be somewhat in this time frame?
It's currently in design. Uh, Patriots Park, uh, turn lane is in design now, and when that's done, then we'll, we'll construct that and resurface from Patriots Park to Columbia Road.
Continuation, but it'll be moving now and not put off.
Did I cover everything? I know there's a lot.
Yeah, there's, our contract does allow for escalation of asphalt prices. That's the only way we can get our contractors to actually bid a current price. Due to the rising cost of asphalt, it, it rises daily. If we didn't have this escalation clause, they would have to forecast. They don't take chances. They really throw a high number at us. So with our current contract, the way it's written, they bid it, the day they start paving, if the cost of asphalt is going up, they get an increase in their, in their pay.
How do we verify that?
There's an index that GDOT publishes every month that shows you what the price of asphalt was at the beginning of the month. And so we'll knock down that they are, we'll note that they bid the project in August, and we'll use that as a reference point. So in December, if it went from $600 a ton to $800 a ton, we'll know there was a 30% increase in cost. There's a formula that's built into the contract that says how we calculate that number down, but it's, it's all published tables by GDOT that everybody's aware of, so.
It drops to 500, do we get a credit?
We get money back. If it goes the other way, they have to pay us, or we, we don't pay as much, correct? The, the price goes down. It's a risk we both take. Um, so we want to make sure, again, we ask for more money than, than what we actually got the bid for, to have that money covered in case prices do up. But again, if they go down, we'll put that money back in the fund. It'll also allow us to have some additional overrun to do some IDU-type issues that we did not foresee in the bid as we're, as we're paving. Uh, I think it'll make it for a much better project.
Move to consent. Second.
1.1.
1.1 million. That, that's, the TIA project had a budget. We spent part of it already. There's 1.1 remaining in the TIA budget. Reimbursed 1.1, TIA 1. No TIA 2. This is TIA 2. They allowed us to advance this project due to the condition of the road, even though collections have not started. So we're advanced funding TIA 2 dollars out of our general fund. When collections start, happen... When collections start happening for TIA two, GDOT will reimburse us the full amount that was authorized by the, by the public. But the additional one point four million will come out of our T-SPOLOST discretion, I'm sorry, our SPOLOST seventeen twenty-two transportation money. Very confusing.
But we got it.
We have the money. General fund's paying one point one, we'll get reimbursed for that, twenty-three. The rest of it will come out of seventeen to twenty-two SPOLOST. Have a, we have a contract signed with GDOT allowing us to do this work and then we'll reimburse us.
All righty. What matters, Mr. Traveler? Staff report.
Yes, sir. We've included the year-to-date budget report and the water and sewer construction project reports for your review. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Pocket, sir?
Not too bad. We, uh, this month, we're about two million gallons a day over what we were this time last year.
Bad then?
No, sir.
Are all the projects, for the most part, on time and they're running? Yeah, it's great to see the, the projects we're working on, but as I looked at it, I realized it doesn't tell me. Like what, if one had been projected to be done in January of twenty-two and it's still only halfway there, do we?
There are not very many projects that we're finishing early now just because of still the, the supply chain.
COVID and supply chain.
Everything, you know, like for our electrical project at Blanchard and Clarks Hill Water Treatment Plants, our switchgear was supposed to be here this month and now they're telling us it's gonna be here in November. So we're still having those issues that are slowing a lot of projects up. We have a few contractors that are, that we're having, having trouble with getting to finish projects. We have a few of those. So we're, we're behind schedule on most of them.
Do we add two columns? One, the initial completion date? And the second, and a revised date or a?
We'll be glad to add columns and dates on there, yes, sir.
It's just interesting because I, I mean, I love looking at the projects, but I don't know really where they stand.
We'll take care of it.
How about if you just add one column that just says the, the, whatever the initial completion date is? And that, obviously, we can look at the, and ask questions from that if we have any.
Okay, yes, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Missioners or public comment? Do have one executive session item, what's your?
I make a motion and we move it to the full board.
Second.
Our adjourned at nine twenty-four.
Thank you.